I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order for November 18.
I would like to reach out to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
We move to approve the agenda in November 18, 2013, regular meeting as presented. Second.
Have a motion in the second, I'll refer by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, I'll refer by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we have public participation. We'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Yes, I want to direct your attention to the notes of appreciation. We got a note from K R J congratulating you all on the outstanding Board of Ed and very appropriately so, considering they're our architect and they're the ones that have worked with the Board and the District for all these years, creating the environment that we live and work in every day. And so this is, I feel like, a big pat on the back to them as well, that they, you all recognized in this way. And then Mr. Kirshner, we had all sent a card to him, I thought it was very nice Jim congratulated you as well. And then the food drive, there was a thanking note from St. Vincent de Paul, both here in, out at Bloomsdale. So our food drive is very, very much appreciated. And I know that they had said that at St. Vincent de Paul at Bloomsdale, they were going to have to go shopping because they were just, they just weren't going to make it through the next week without having to go find stuff. And so then our donation came in. And Bloomsdale also contributes to the Bloomsdale-St. Vincent de Paul, as well as to another food bank, another church in the Bloomsdale area. So very, very successful and our community really, really appreciates that. Dr. Lindsay has the disaggregated graduation rate data for you?
That information was contained in your Board packet. Those of you that have been on the Board for a while may notice that this report looks a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. This is actually a new report through the MSIP V process, or this is something that's now generated automatically through the data that we submit and that they collect. Typically, when you, you know, when you get this kind of data, you look at two major things. And one is how we might compare it to the state and then how we compare it to prior years. And looking through the data, of course, it disaggregates it in a variety of ways, based on gender, race or ethnicity, free reduced lunch, IEP disabilities, and then also the ELL, English Language Learned. Several of those don't have significant numbers in those populations, but if you look at the ones that do, for example, the total graduation rate, and we often have female and male, those two, the free reduced lunch charts, if you look at some of the IEP disabilities, especially, really the only one that is a significant number is the non-IEP group. But if you look at all of those areas, we are above state average and in most cases, well above state average. And also, in all of those areas, if you compare this past year to the previous year, we had increases in every one of those. So I think that's, you know, a real testament to the work that they do at high school and some of the programs have been a place for quite some time with those groups of students. So overall, very, very good, very positive, positive trend and very, very, very favorable to the state average.
You'll also note that you have reports of safety drills that were conducted. Those are in your packet. One thing that's not in your packet that I wanted to make you aware of is that it's time, it's that time of year again, folks, for the Board's self-avowal. So you will be, that will be coming to you from MSBA in the mail and it will be marked pretty prominently. It will say something about time-sensitive information, so please be watching for that in the next week or so. And when you get it, if you would please complete it and return it as soon as you can, then MSBA will tabulate that and will send us back a report. Martha, you and I will receive an email copy of their letter back to us and of the report. And then we will, if we have it all back in time for the December Board meeting, we'll review it at that time. If not, it'll be January. So, but anyway, please be watching your mail. I feel like that publisher's clearinghouse, be watching. It's not going to be that good, I'm sorry.
Next, if anyone has any questions or comments. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business and accept procedures for the annual school board election.
Yes, we have three seats this time that the terms are expiring. That's Mr. Basler, Mr. Crowther, and Mrs. Resinger's seats are all up for open terms this year. The filing will begin on December the 17th at 8:00 a.m. and will continue during regular business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Filing will end on January the 21st, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. Filing will not occur on the days the District Office is closed due to inclement weather or on the following holidays of December 25th and January 1st. Documents may be, aren't necessary, documents necessary to file as a candidate may be secured in person from the superintendent's office. So we don't mail them out to you, you will have to come in, so.
Okay, we'll move on to new business.
We need a, oh, sorry, yes, we do.
Move to after filing resolution. Be resolved if Board of Education authorized an election to be held on Tuesday, April 8th, 2014, to fill three three-year terms as Directors of the St. Henry Board of Education. Furthermore, the notice of the election and certification of candidates shall be submitted to the county clerk according to the state statutes.
Have a motion in the second, I'll refer by saying aye.
Yes, we need a roll call program.
Yes.
Mr. Basler?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Crowther's accent. Ms. Dunsey?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Resinger, yes. Mr. Riegel?
Yes.
Okay, eight, six, two, and one, yes. Okay. Kind of different now that I have that on this thing and not here, writing that down. Okay, with that, we'll move on to new business and that's the curriculum revisions.
Yes, Dr. Lindsay has taken care of that.
I want to talk to you a little bit about the process that we go through when we're reviewing curriculum and writing new curriculum. So really, it starts a couple of years in advance and teachers begin talking about their curriculum through the P L C process, meeting in their P L C teams and discussing some of the issues that have come up in the past, standards that are in place, assessments, so on and so forth. So there's quite a bit of work that goes into the process prior to them actually sitting down and working on the curriculum. They did that this past June with the formal process. With that, there's representatives from each grade level, K-5, and those are staggered between Bloomsdale and St. Jen Elementary. So for example, if Bloomsdale is K-2 and 4, then St. Jen Elementary is 1, 3, and 5. Typically, like this year, we had Science and Social Studies, so we flip-flopped those. So K-2 and 4 from Bloomsdale, for example, for Science, and then vice versa for Social Studies. As they went through that, also, of course, the middle school teachers from each of those subject areas and then also the high school teachers for those subject areas. Really looked at a variety of things, reviewed in particular Missouri learning standards and how they were linked to our curriculum. The main alignment is built to course level expectations and grade level expectations because in Science and Social Studies, that's still how we're assessed. That's the process that's used and that's through the Show Me Standards, something we've had for quite some time. Common Core standards are not really content standards for Science and Social Studies, but they're reading and writing standards and really bring in things like text complexity and reading nonfiction and understanding graphs and charts and those kinds of things that are particular to those subject areas. So that information was brought in, vocabulary is a big thing with that as well. Completed curriculum, once they went through that process, is then shared with a committee that has parent and student representation. Teachers explain the basic units and topics in their grade level or in their course and the folks that are on the committee have an opportunity to ask questions and provide input if they'd like. And so we get through that process, basically that's a summarization of the content. You have a copy of what was presented, that is in your Board packet. There's also a link on the website where the public can access the Science and Social Studies curriculum. And then I also brought a couple of hard copies tonight in case you wanted to look at those. The final step in that process is a recommendation that comes to the Board of Education tonight. Teachers really worked hard with both Science and Social Studies. Appreciate their hard work, their expertise, their pre-work that they did prior to the actual sitting down and putting the information into the curriculum program. As you know, we're kind of phasing in a new program called Build Your Own Curriculum. And with that, teachers have to learn that process as well as the curriculum writing process. Also want to thank the parents and the students who served on those committees for taking the time to review the curriculum and then participate in the meeting and ask questions. Some particulars, talk about Science for a minute. Some of you may have heard about something called Next Generation Science Standards. Those standards are available, but have not been adopted by the state as of yet. So when we were looking at Science curriculum, we did review that information. We found out that it really wasn't a lot different than what we were teaching already, but we did not align the curriculum to that information. And the reason we didn't do that is because the state has not adopted those standards. When they do, they can adopt them as a whole or they may modify them in some way. And the information that we're getting from Dusty is that we're looking at at least four to five years down the road before they were getting assessments that would be tied to the Next Generation Science Standards. So we did use that. One thing that comes from the Next Generation Science Standards is they do have a lot of really good instructional activities. So we looked at it from that viewpoint, but not really from a viewpoint of aligning the curriculum to it. One other thing with Science is the Physical Science, which has been a freshman level course, is transitioning to a General Science course for next year, is the recommendation. In the past, it was mainly a year-long Physical Science with a little bit of Chemistry and a little bit of Biology. And the Science teachers really felt that they wanted to lay a good, strong foundation in all three areas. So the new General Science course is basically, in general, a third Physical Science kinds of activities, a third Chemistry, and a third Biology to lay that strong foundation for all three of those courses. Social Studies, we have had a fairly significant change in the course order and Mrs. Flea is going to talk a little bit about that here in a minute. And then before I forget, we also have a new Animal Science course that I included at the back of the Science section, it kind of seemed to fit there. It's a new semester course that's going to be offered in the, will be offered in the spring. prerequisites for it are both Ag Science 1 and Ag Science 2. And one thing that is a nice plus about that course is it opens the door for some funding opportunities that haven't been available previously. So we're excited about that, of course, that's in the Go Ag program, not really in the Science, not really in the Science program. I think Mrs. Flea is going to talk a little bit about kind of the transition plan with the Social Studies course sequence. I think maybe she has a handout for it.
I'll throw it in here since we're talking about Science real quick. We received today from Mississippi Line, a representative from Mississippi Line, and a former graduate, Kyle Pope. They applied for a grant and they gave us some resources for our Earth Science classes. And I will get some more information and bring that back to you December, so we know who to thank. But we just got it today and got the materials, so that we were pretty excited to get some of that stuff. So I will get you that information next month. Last year, the high school Social Studies Department came to the middle school because, you know, we, our professional learning communities process, we have a 6-12 meeting. And they came to one of those meetings and they said, "We have an idea. We have been struggling with American Government EOC scores at the high school. Right now, American Government is taught as a ninth grade class for one semester. And in that one semester, they also do U.S. Constitution and Missouri Constitution testing, which are both requirements for graduation. So in that one semester class, and then we throw an EOC out of two." So they proposed that we do some adjusting and realignment of our Social Studies curriculum to move that American Government class up to a year-long course and make it at the 10th grade level. And to do that, it would take some adjustments on our part at the middle school, too. So what I did here is I'm a very visual learner, I have to see this. So I made this up for you all. So if you start in the upper left-hand corner, 2012, 2013. This is the way our curriculum is written now and sequenced, and this is the way it was taught last year. Sixth grade is what we call Social Studies 6, which was a World History class, year-long. Seventh grade is American History 1, eighth grade, American History 2. Ninth grade, the American Government with the EOC testing. 11th grade is World History for a year-long course. 11th grade is American History, year-long, and they do an end-of-course exam there, too. And then the senior year, they need a half a credit so they can choose from all these electives, Contemporary Issues, Economics, Modern America, Psychology, or Sociology. And they also have the requirement of personal finance. And that's a half a semester and they can take it anywhere in their 10th, 11th, and 12th grade year. They just have to take it and pass it before they graduate. So that's how it's written right now. So to make this change happen, we had to begin in the middle school this year making adjustments to the way we teach our course sequences. And we worked with Dr. Lindsay and he gave us approval to go ahead and do it. But the middle school is the only place that makes the change this year because our change is three years, whereas the high school, it's a two-year process. And I think you'll see as we go through this. So this year, all of the high school courses are being taught the same. They don't have to change their sequence. But in middle school, we, at the sixth grade level, are teaching American History 1. We're teaching American History 1 at seventh grade. And then our eighth graders are getting their American History 2. In the middle school, we did add a class, because they had room for a semester class, and we're calling it Current Events. And they are doing Current Events Happening in the World this past week, maybe two weeks. They've gone out into our community, they're doing a lot of local history, too, so they're touring the old houses and learning about St. Jen. So we've added that in, too. So this year, that's the only change. Next year, when the new curriculum is implemented, at the sixth grade, American History 1 is in place. We'll teach American History 2 at seventh and eighth grade. The high school will change. At ninth grade, they will do World History for one semester. That is not an end-of-course exam right there, so one semester of World History. At 10th grade, they'll have to do World History for an entire year because that class will not get World History if we change with them. They're still under the old curriculum. And then 11th and 12th grade stay the same with the personal finance staying the same and all the electives. So the 2015-16 school year is when everything is in place and the alignment is finished. So that will take our Social Studies curriculum to American History 1 at sixth grade, American History 2 at seventh grade, World History 8th grade. At ninth grade, one semester of World History. 10th grade, American Government, which will now be a year-long class and will have an end-of-course exam with your U.S. Constitution and your Missouri Constitution requirements. 11th grade is still American History with an EOC assessment. And then 12th grade is that elective and the personal finance still stays in place. So that's how it's all sequenced in the new curriculum and aligned to roll out and hopefully improve our American Government scores and give us more support for that class.
Do you have any questions? That was really put some thought into it.
Well, and credit goes to the teachers. I mean, the high school teachers brought the idea and nine, or six through 12, they worked on that concept and they got the law lined out. And Chris and I just kind of sat back and smiled and I tied it up.
One of the things that we found is that we had freshmen taking the Government EOC after one semester of instructional freshman level, whereas almost all other school districts, they had a year-long course at either the sophomore or junior level. And although they were holding their own and performing pretty well, it really wasn't a fair comparison to what we were doing in other districts. So that was really kind of the impetus to make the changes. Once we got in there and started looking at it and found out there were, it was kind of a trickle-down effect that you made one change and then affected something else, affected something else, and then it took a three-year transition to get there so that you didn't have students that were missing chunks of curriculum.
When did everybody start putting their heads together?
About two years ago, Mr. Boyd and Mr. Keeker attended a conference together over the summer. And one of the things that had been pointed out to them at the conference that they were at, Social Studies teachers, they were all kind of gathered out, "What are you doing?" And they kept saying, "Well, we're doing American Government first semester at the freshman level." And they were like, "Really?" I mean, they were kind of laughed at on this. And Dustin, prior to that, Mr. Keeker had been struggling with the American Government scores, trying to figure out ways to get them up, working hard to make that change and to get those scores up. So our first effort was to put John and Dustin together and be able to let them bounce ideas. And part of that was sending them to the conference. And then they came back from the conference and said, "We believe we can do it a little bit, but we really believe the best thing we could do." So it goes back, I believe, two years that they've actually looked at this, considered this, helped this through. Another thing, if I may add, they also looked at the actual ideas and released items from EOC tests and believed that because a lot of the American history is, there's political cartoons, there's kind of the politics woven into the American history, that we actually can see a better support of the American History EOC on the junior level by giving those kids more firmer foundations the year before in government and being able to talk about politics at the time and the history of those politics will actually better support the American History EOC as well. They've done a lot of looking at it.
I don't know if these two align, but also I see that World History now is eighth grade and ninth grade, so.
That was done on purpose as well, the idea that by giving those back-to-back and actually seeing a year and a half of it, the hopes was that any of that World History background that's necessary to understand American Government and American history would just be strong, more strongly supported.
And of course, they've sequenced it out, you know, in eighth grade, they go from this point to this point. I don't know.
So they can get more into that?
Yeah, periodized, yes, and then I don't know the names of the periods, but.
That's where we backed out and said, "Aye, good job, guys."
That's why we have two wonderful guys.
And I really think that this whole process that they went through is kind of a testament to the P L C process and the leadership within those P L C teams to do the study and that sort of thing and the support from building administration. So I really think that this is a good step, a positive step, and we're looking forward absolutely to it.
So we approve the curriculum, this has set all this in place.
It's so exciting. We come here and we hear all this exciting stuff from you guys and then we just get the vote to. You guys did such a wonderful job.
You guys get the vote, we get that.
Absolutely.
I move to approve the curriculum revisions to Science and Social Studies as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, I'll refer by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we have Board Policy Updates.
Yes, we, there's one policy here that's required to be in place by January 1st. And because they were doing that one, they decided to adjust the southern one as well. The first one being the policy related to Board Member Qualifications. And since it's time to set the Board Election, it's also probably a very appropriate time for that. The qualifications were formerly only listed in the procedure and they decided that it was more appropriate to list them all in the policy as well. And just for the record, I'm going to read what those requirements are. First of all, that the prospective Board members must be citizens of the United States of America, be resident taxpayers of the St. Jen Elementary District, and a taxpayer is considered an individual who has paid taxes to the state or any subdivision thereof, which would be our county, immediately preceding the 12-month period, or the spouse of such individual, have resided in Missouri for a minimum of one year immediately preceding their election or appointment, be at least 24 years of age, be eligible to hold office in accordance with Missouri law, while holding office, not be serving a sentence or period of probation for a felony in Missouri or for a crime that would be a felony if committed in Missouri, have never pled guilty or no law contender nor been convicted under Missouri law or the law of another jurisdiction of a felony connected with the right, with the exercise of the right of suffrage, not be registered or required to be registered as a sex offender pursuant to Missouri law, and have filed all required campaign disclosure reports for all previous elections in which they were candidates and have paid all fees assessed against them by the Missouri Ethics Commission if applicable. So if that applies to you and you want to run for the Board, come in and see us after, what is it, December the 18th, is that what we said earlier?
Seventeenth.
All right, so there we have it, that's the first one. The second one is actually a change to the law regarding reporting and investigating child abuse. And this is the one that had to be in effect by January the 1st of 2014. Main changes here are that it's very specific about some training that's required for our staff. We do this training, our staff receives this training currently. MSBA is going to be providing some video training that we will be looking at and seeing if we want to replace what we're doing with that. It also takes out, as the law requires, there used to be, you had to report within, as an administrator, you had to report or cause to report child abuse or neglect within 24 hours of finding out about it. Now it takes that out completely. It must be an immediate report and so that is kind of a change there. So those are, those were the big things. Were there questions any of you had about that particular policy? Our staff, everyone who works here. Our staff, everyone who works here, is considered a mandated reporter of these things, and we talk to our staff every year about what that means. And we show videos that show, that give signs and symptoms of child abuse being taking place. And we encourage our staff to make those reports and to make their administrators aware when those reports need to be made. We document those reports. We keep those, keep that documentation. Frustrating to us is the fact that often when we report what we may think of as necessary reporting of child abuse is not considered that by Children's Division. And so we have, because of hard lessons, learned that some of these things must be followed up. Even though we've done our job and reported to Children's Division, we probably will be doing more contacting of our local authorities in the county and the city just to make sure that the ball is not dropped. So that's a step beyond what we're required to do, but we feel like in some instances, it's something we really need, so.
Move to approve the policy, the proposed policy changes. That data is presented.
I have a motion in second, I'm opposed.
All right.
Motion, yes.
No. Oh, we got one more. Community council memorandum?
Oh, no, I don't have that. Yes. Sorry, guys, I don't have my paper here. And I didn't go down far enough. Okay. Next, item seven, is community counseling, commander, I have no understanding.
Okay. We, actually, Mrs. Wyler has been taking the lead on this. This is a, an effort by community counseling to work with us to assist our counselors because a school guidance counselor receives some very specific training about helping students related to matters that affect the classroom. They're not necessarily licensed counselors for matters that extend beyond the classroom. So we oftentimes, they feel and ask for, "What do we do?" And parents ask that question. And so community counseling, we've tried to work out some things with them to offer that kind of help by licensed counselors through community counseling on the school campus during the school day. Ms. Wyler, would you care to address some of those items, please?
Sure. Well, this will lessen. Mr. Stewart really wore off, you know, ingrained that in me. But our community counseling.
She's channeling Mr. Stewart.
Our community counseling center is the contracted organization by the state of Missouri to provide mental health services. And as taxpayers of St. John's, you may notice that you pay to a mental health board, you pay some taxes to that. And so what community counseling has told us is the mental health board said, "What can we do? How can you use funds to support this educational agencies within our jurisdiction?" And, you know, there had been, there had been talk, the counselors here talked to those people there. Counselors here knew that there was some need. They, they really struggle with trying to address mental health issues with children when they have so much else on their plate about passing classes and testing and whatever else they have going on. And community counseling would like to step in and be a part of providing those mental health services. So what they, this minimal memorandum of understanding, while it's not explicit in here, what they propose to us is to come on our campus two days a week and be available for students K through 12 on a referral basis, and referrals will come from the counseling department. Not that administrators or nurses or others could provide that, but the counselors speak the ones that actually pull the referral list. We'll do the confidentiality and releases of information, necessary releases of information, and then they will have a licensed clinical social worker that will be, no, she's not that, she's an LPC, licensed professional counselor, she's an LPC. Who will come on our campus, be available to help our students, bring this K through 12 two days a week.
I guess great.
They're going to take, there is some Medicaid billing and such involved, they'll take care of that. We won't have to do anything. Our sole responsibility is figure out who needs additional help and get them to the council when it comes here. And then we, the memorandum of understanding, it asks for us to provide a safe confidential place for that council to take place, and all of the buildings are able to come over the place for that to happen. So it's a, it's a partnership with community agency, and, you know, we hope that it's a good thing for our kids and a good help for our counselors.
That conjunction with the safety updates this year.
Absolutely, absolutely. And they're also, you will know in the memorandum of understanding, talk about the sharing of information. So after they met the kids, they will also be sure that the counselors understand what's going on. And so they work closely with the counselors in partnership to deal with the whole picture of students. It's not like they're going to meet with them, but the counselors never know what's going on. They will bring them.
And I guess the parents are involved.
Yes, that, and that's on our part. And initially, we're going to need to seek out those consents and that kind of thing before they can see them. Yes, definitely, parent.
Council for anything that's maybe to talk about.
Correct.
Brief, brief to a head.
So like you also have the board meeting?
Yes. The doors open, they can restrict what the issue would be, anything that the council would feel like somebody else might be able to provide support in that area. Also, you know, depression, a lot of the mental health issues that the counselors just can't get.
Well, and are not necessarily, not all of our counselors are trained in that. We do have one counselor on staff who went through, actually wasn't trained as a school guidance counselor to start with. She crossed over from the clinical side. But most of our counselors, our school staff, they were teachers. And yes, they've been through extra schooling, but it's very much school guidance counselors. And that's a very different thing from a licensed professional counselor. And so while they can see kids, generally, there's a point where they say, you know, "If you need more help than this, we need to do something else."
And what was happening is the kids weren't necessarily following up with that, or their parents were following up with that. So this, this will make that, provide that. I'm pretty proud of that. It's a little scary to turn over some of our control and some of our stuff that we do here, but, you know, we think that we can try it. And it's very exciting that the mental health board, essentially the mental health board is really the ones who said, "We need to try to do this." So this model, they're going to try in other schools, and also have those mental health boards. I think they mentioned Jackson and Bridgeham, other different schools, but will be the first public school to do that. They've been doing some work in Valley, they started that last year. Will be the first public school, and that community council center has the contract for five councils in the state of Missouri.
And this is no additional cost?
No cost. No cost.
No cost to the families?
Only if they are a dedicated person and they know the value of it. But they'll take care of all that, we don't have to worry about it.
I mean, this, I know, it sounds maybe not the right word to say exciting, but it is in a way, just to be able to help those kids. You know, some kids that maybe lived in this or were living down here, and now, God bless them for what they've done.
In K-12, that's exciting, too, as it is.
Yes, it is.
All kids.
That's a very special.
So we will definitely be sharing that information with us about therapy as well in all of our organizations.
Anyone else have a question?
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding by community counseling.
I have a motion in second, I'm opposed.
Before we move on to adjournment, I have one other announcement briefly that I meant to do in the superintendent report and forgot, but I'm going to ask Mrs. Flea to make the announcement because it concerns her family.
Well, I'm very excited. I got a phone call today from the Loves Corporation, the Loves Foundation, it's going to be up here. When they come into a community, they make a donation to a nonprofit organization as a thank you to the community for letting them come in. From my understanding, the nominations come from their new employees. And we have had new students from the guys that are construction, building it, to the general manager. I've had two more enrolled today. They nominated the middle school, so we will be going to the opening, I will be going to the opening ceremony with the students to accept $2,000 check to our student club.
Yes.[1616.12][1616.12](applause) Really, so. Mr., what's his last name? Mitchell, the general editor.
Yes.
Anyway, he, he came out to the announcement, he interviewed, and he said that he'd just moved here. And I said, "Oh, we just send kids."[1637.12][1637.12](laughing) I said, "I know, because it's wrong." He said, "We checked the middle, we checked the school out in those schools where..."
And I said, "Oh, great, that's great." Yeah. We have starters.
Yes, they're, he's very excited. Yes, they're very excited.
Oh, all good stuff, all good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Eric, take it away.
I move that the Board of Education, in a closed meeting with closed record and closed vote, following a regular open meeting on December 16, 2013, held in the RW Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, Center of the Year, for purposes of discussing and voting upon the following items presented. Legal action, cost of action, or litigation. Need purchase of samples of state. Hiring, firing, recruiting, or promoting particular employees. Elastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals. Testing and examination of individuals. Preparation, negotiation of employee groups. Specifications of the federal meeting is called through or through. Steal, be it related documents delivered or opened. Steal, files, and related documents, the law for holding are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract or contract detection. Individually identifiable personnel records. Performance ratings, or records pertaining to employer applicants or friendships. Records protected from exposure by law. Records related to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing. Confidential privileged communication with the knowledge. Existing or proposed security system or structural plans of digital property. Records identifying or allowing unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption or configuration of components or the operation of computers, computer systems, computer network, or telecommunications network. Credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. Under the mood, the notice of this meeting is intended for the general repose of the required by law. I have a motion in second, Roll, Hall, Airbauer.
Yes.
Kate Bogan.
Yes.
Martha Tyler-Fatton. Carol Dunson. Maggie Daniels. Robert Reeser.
Yes.
Reprovoff.
Yes.
Motion, Karen Sixo.
I need to go with closed session, with closed record and a closed vote after.